I'm gonna go ahead and get started with tonight's program. Thank you again for joining us. We are so happy that you can be here to participate in our special event honoring two of SBCUSD's newest administrators. If I could get your attention to everyone in the back of the room, if you would kindly keep your voices down, thank you so very much. We are getting ready to start tonight's program. I appreciate your attention. Thank you so very much. Before we get started, I just want to take the opportunity to recognize the members of the San Bernardino High School Mariachi Band who came and performed for us this evening. Thank you so very much to Daisy, the Mariachi President, Juan, Christopher, and Vincent. They put on an incredible show, so if we can give them a warm round of applause. And for those of you who do not know me, my name is Carla Cross, and I'm currently serving as the Internal Communications Manager here at the San Bernardino City Unified School District. It is my pleasure to be here. I'd also like to take the opportunity to welcome our members of the Board of Education, our Superintendent Mauricio Ariano, our students, families, and all educational partners who could be with us tonight, as we are taking part in a special reception in honor of Terry Koenig, our new Associate Superintendent of Business Services, Facilities, and Operations, as well as Mary Rhone Goodwin, Director of Communications and Community Relations. At this time, I would like to welcome and acknowledge our elected officials and their representatives who may be in attendance on their behalf this evening. From the Office of Senator Rosisa Liase Ochoa Bog, Mr. Michael Glaser. From the Office of Assemblymember Eloise Gomez Reyes, Maria Bruner. From the Office of Assemblymember James Ramos, we have Jack Lugo. From the County of San Bernardino, we have 5th District Supervisor, Mr. Joe Baca Jr. From the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Office, we have Dr. Gwendolyn Doughty Rogers, who is representing us tonight. And from the City of San Bernardino, I believe we have Mayor Helen Tran, Councilmembers Kimberly Calvin, Sandra Ibarra, and Damon Alexander in attendance. And last but not least, we have the Mexican Councilman, Mr. Carlos Jimenez with us tonight. At this time, would you please join me in a warm round of applause as we welcome Board President Dr. Scott Wyatt to the podium to offer remarks on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you very much.
I had to look at my watch. I think it's good afternoon or good evening now. So, good evening, everyone. Just welcomed to Samuel City Unified School District. It's great to see all of you. Really special acknowledgement to our students, though. We see we have the Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal here, as well as the contestants this year for Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal. So, let's give it up to them. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't say it, so I have to give a shout out to her, because once a Cardinal, always a Cardinal. So, Dr. Rogers, I see you back there, and good to see you. So, great to see your alumni here for our kids. And let's give a huge shout out, though, to our Mariachi Quartet we had today, right? Let's give it to them. You know, that's been a long time coming. The Board of Education was hopeful for having an amazing Mariachi program, and it started now, just right before COVID. We were getting it going, and COVID hit, and then we had to start all over again. But I was talking to the young men and young ladies outside, and they're super excited about it, so we're excited about it as well. I believe we'll have the biggest and best Mariachi program in the county. I'm confident of that, because our young men, our young ladies here, who are so talented and do such a great job. Well, we're here, though, also to welcome two new staff. I won't say brand-new, because some of them have been here before, and others we know very well. But I see him right back there, Mr. Terry Koenig. Welcome back to Samuel City Unified School District. And I learned something about Mr. Koenig. You know, we're in a little bit of competition on who's been working in education laws, but he beat me by two years. He started in 1992 as a sub-teacher. So, Terry, thank you for all your service for our kids and for being a teacher as well and working yourself through the ranks, because it's always good to know where you come from and to understand the educational side of the house and the business side of the house. So, congratulations again. And then Mary Rhone Goodwin, where's she at? I'm right here. And Mary Rhone and I, we go back just yesterday before she came here, because we worked at county schools together, and I know she's had a tremendous amount of experience in different districts, and now comes here to Samuel City Unified School District and partner back up with Superintendent Ariano, so we know we got a dynamic team between the Superintendent Communications. And I also found out that she's Filipina, so that was nice. So, mabuhay to you, my friend, and congratulations again, so. And definitely thank you to all of our electeds that are here, supporting us and supporting our kids, most importantly, in our programs. You know, we always say that the city will do it together, right? And so, I love seeing our city officials here, county officials, state officials. You know, with your help, with your assistance, we definitely can make this a district of excellence, as well as turn our city around. And our hope is right in front of us, so our kids are the ones that are making hope happen for us. You are our future, so we need to do everything we can to make sure you succeed and take our district and our city to the next level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. I'd like to take this moment to welcome and say hello to Chief Cerna with California County Fire Department. Thank you so very much for joining us. I'd also like to welcome Deputy Chief, excuse me, Garth Goodell with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Thank you so very much for joining us, to you both. At this time, would you please put your hands together as we welcome our very own
Well, good afternoon, everybody. When I start this? Hey, how about those mariachis from Samuel High School, man? Let's go, yeah! Our kids in Samuel City Unified, just brilliant, amazing children, and we have some more here in front of us today. I know they're from Purdue. I'm not supposed to be biased, but hey, you know. Always a carnal. Once a carnal, always a carnal, right? I want to thank everybody for being here today. Thank you for being a community partner. Thank you for understanding the importance of our young people and supporting our young people, and more so, supporting the folks that we're bringing in to Samuel City Unified School District to continue building on the successes that we have had in place for decades in this district. So, it is my honor here today to reintroduce and re-welcome the last two pieces of what I consider a remarkable and amazing cabinet team that I get to work with. And I want to introduce them first and then get to our two new folks. But I want to acknowledge Sandra, Anna, Joe Paulino, Marcus. Where are you in the audience? I see you. I am so blessed to work with such competent, student-centered people. And I had two more vacancies to fill, and it was really important for me to continue the tradition of making sure that we hired people with integrity, that are quality people, high caliber, and more importantly, that really care about this community and the kids of Samuel City Unified School District. So, it is my honor and privilege to formally welcome Mr. Terry Koenig. And she's gonna laugh, but I gotta do it. Mary Rhone Goodwin to San Bernardino. The two of you, with your experience, with your love of this city and this school district, and growing up in this school district and working in this school district, you are bringing something to this district that's gonna make us more magical, more incredible, and more successful than we've already been. So, thank you, guys, for choosing us and choosing to work with these amazing students and staff. You are truly gonna make us a better district. And I'm gonna say this, as I've always said, you know, it's a great day in San Bernardino, and it's even a greater day in the Samuel City Unified School District because of all of you. So, thank you for being here today. Thank you for the warm welcome to our new colleagues, but truly from my heart, thank you for all you do, everyone in this room, for the kids and the people in this community. I love you, and we love you tremendously for all that you're gonna do. Thank you very much.
In just a moment, we will have an opportunity for our elected officials and their representatives to present their proclamations and/or certificates to our, to tonight's honorees. But before we do so, let's introduce our honorees and hear from them. Up first, if you would kindly stand to your feet as we welcome Mr. Terry Koenig to offer remarks.
Wow. This is more than I could even fathom had I was asked to script something. I am deeply, deeply touched, deeply humbled by everyone's presence, the time you took away from your day to come here after work, after school, and join in the celebration that Mr. Ariano had mentioned about fulfilling a team to move forward. I do feel this is, as a return home. It's been a while since I was, last year, about two years. I was over in Upland Unified and did a lot of learning, and I want to take that learning and bring it back here and work with Mr. Ariano and the board and take us to the next level. So, I appreciate you.
And now's with great pleasure that I introduce to you Ms. Mary Rhone Goodwin, our News Director of Communications and Community Relations. Please stand to your feet and warmly welcome her as she makes her way to the podium.
Well, salamat. Maraming salamat. Magandang gabi. That means thank you very much and good evening. I just want to say how incredibly proud I am to have joined this district to work again with our superintendent. It is, it feels like a homecoming, but I haven't been that far away from home. I was literally just a block away over at county schools, where I did, I also learned a lot and hope to bring a lot here to this, to this magnificent community, which I was raised in, which I'm raising my family in. I believe in San Bernardino. I believe in what this district is doing for our students, which is making hope happen. And I am looking forward to every opportunity to highlight the successes of our students, of our staff. We are not a district that's a building. We are made up of people, and that's all of you. That's our community members. That's our students and our families, and our families that are made up of foster moms and dads, of grandparents who are raising their grandchildren, their great-grandchildren, some of them, aunts and uncles. And we are here for you all, to support all of you and to see your dreams realized. So, I want to thank you so much. Superintendent Ariano knows I like to be in the background, so this is really outside of my comfort zone, and I'm just incredibly proud of each of your efforts. And like I said, I want to see your dreams come true.
All right, Mary Rhone and Terry Koenig, if you would please. I'm so sorry. I should have mentioned that earlier. Please don't go too far away. And for our elected officials, thank you so very much for your patience. We're going to be presenting Mary Rhone and Terry Koenig with their certificates, their proclamations, provided by our elected officials and/or their representatives. If you are with an elected official and you would like to come to the podium at this time to present your proclamation, would you please come forward at this time? And we will also take a photo op. If you would like to give remarks, this would now be that time for you to do so. So, since we're being shy, I'll go ahead and call the names. Jack, please come forward. This is Jack Lugo from Assemblymember Ramos's office. And for our cabinet team members, if you would start to assemble as well, there will be a photo opportunity for you in just a moment. Up next, we have Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., who will also be providing remarks.
Thank you for the kind introduction. Thank you, Honorable Board President, Board Members, Superintendent, Staff, Community Members, Cardinals. Yes, Cardinals. Well, it's a pleasure to be here and welcome the two newest staff, and anyone that's worked with staff, ever had staff, you appreciate good staff. And I think we got two good ones here that are gonna be compassionate for our students and our community, but most of all, passionate for their work and really making a difference. And I'm sure, under the leadership of Superintendent Ariano and the entire Board of Education, they're gonna do a great job. I'm excited. We're welcoming one back, so welcome back to San Bernardino and welcome. We appreciate your good work. And just on behalf of the County of San Bernardino, as a former public school teacher, I appreciate the work that all of you do, but all of our new staff that's coming on. And on behalf of the County of San Bernardino, I want to say congratulations, and let's give them a warm welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Baca. Representing the City of San Bernardino, I have Mr. Damon Alexander coming to the podium.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Okay. Merry Christmas. First off, I always like to do, and I would be remiss if I didn't do this, that beautiful young lady over there is my granddaughter, Avery Grace, and I take her everywhere I go. So, as a councilman, I rise her and raise her up, right? You gotta train them in the way they should go, and so that's what I do. So, Avery Grace, she's three years old, so I definitely take her everywhere I go. But back to the honorees. On behalf of the mayor and council, I appreciate what you guys do. And I'm always here, and we are always here as elected officials, sir, to let you know that the City of San Bernardino, the elected officials, it's a partnership for us. No longer are those days where, you know, the city's on one side and the school district's on another. I've said it time and time again, and I will continue to say it until we start walking in lockstep. And I believe we're working in that direction right now, where the city and the school district are working together, right? Because we're all San Bernidinos at heart, and we all work together. You come back, you're back. You come across the street, amen. But I would continue to share that with my heart, that, you know, we need to work together, continue to work together to make San Bernardino a better place. I love it when my fire chief is out here, Chief Cerna, he's out here. He doesn't have to be here, but he's here celebrating you. You know, all those people that are around the district are here to share and to celebrate you coming together with the City of San Bernardino. So, on behalf of the mayor and council, Terry, and my new good friend, Mary Rhone, is that how you do? That's it? I was gonna try to say it in Tagalog, but I slipped up. On behalf of the mayor and council, we congratulate you on your appointment, and we look forward to many years of service to the students and the scholars of San Bernardino.
This time, I'm gonna ask if the members of our Board of Education and our cabinet, the executive cabinet team, would please make your way to the front of the dais for Audience, thank you so very much for your patience. We have one more photo opportunity. At this time, would the members of the San Bernardino High School Cardinal Courts, please make your way to the front of the dais? Mary Rhone, Mary Rhone. If you want to take a picture with me. Thank you so much for your patience. Thank you so very much for coming out tonight and for the warm welcome and reception that you have helped us offer, our newest team members, to San Bernardino City Unified School District. This actually concludes tonight's reception. Thank you so very much for coming. The official board meeting will be called to order in just a few moments. Thank you very much.
All righty, folks. Our colleagues are all here, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Again, welcome, everybody, and thank you again to everyone that showed up this evening to honor our students and our staff members that have been welcomed back home to Samuel City Unified School District. We're excited to see all of you, and again, looking forward to a great board meeting and, as always, a great school year. So, go to 2.2, which the student board member's swearing in. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Ariano.
Raise your right hand, please. And please repeat after me. I...
I, Camille Elzatma.
I, Jimena Preciado.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Then I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the United States.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are now official. And I believe we're gonna take a picture with the members of the board, right? If I can have the members of the board, let's take a picture. Come on down.
I'm gonna do a Facebook Live when the kids see.
Watch for me. Yeah. Just turn it. Okay? All righty, well, congratulations to our student board members again. Welcome to the board. Fantastic to have you both here. We'll move on to 2.3, Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a young man, one of our students from San Bernardino High School, who will lead us in the pledge, Mr. Alejandro. So, Alejandro, come up to the mic over here, and you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Shall we all stand?
Raise your right hand over your heart.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, Alejandro, you had a little help there, so we have to know who your partner was up there. Yes? So, no, on the mic, just so we know who you are.
Leslie Caldera.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right, moving on to 2.4, Approval of the Agenda.
I'll move.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman and seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any items to pull or for discussion? All right, hearing has seen none, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. Ms. Alexander, welcome. I see you up there. Hopefully, everything's working for you. And so, we'll do an, when we call on you, it'll be an oral vote. So, Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll go over to our student board members. Camelia? Amena? All right, the rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt, could we please do oral for all your votes? It's not working right now.
Oh, sure, we sure will. So, I'll start from my right. Ms. Rosales Medina, we're gonna have to go verbal.
Aye.
Ms. Grande?
Aye.
I am an aye. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sevaios? Ms. Chusky?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries for approval of the agenda. We'll move on to 3.0, Special Presentations and Recognition. 3.1, Salinas Creative Arts Elementary School Choir. Let's welcome them now. Are they here? Do we have them here? All right, I think they're coming in right now, so let's give them a warm San Bernardino City Unified School District welcome when they come in. That's your cue, when they come in. No, I'm just kidding. Hopefully not, or Mr. Ariano's gonna be singing for us tonight. Probably with me. While they're coming in this evening. Okay. Now, I got to see them recently perform, and they did an amazing job. But I'm gonna let Superintendent Ariano introduce them once they're inside the boardroom, the Dr. Margaret Hill Boardroom Community Room. I got to high-five some of you the other day, so good to see you again. All right. We got Salinas in the house. Hope we got some proud parents out there watching here tonight. Wow, look at this. Might have to go two rows deep today. Look at that. Fantastic. Look at it, sharp.
President Wyatt, as the wonderful students from Salinas Elementary make their way in, I wanted to share with the board and the members of the community, first of all, just an opportunity to brag and show off the talent and brilliance of our students. But also, I'm a big believer of making sure that as we move forward as a district, we sometimes have to honor our past. And many years ago, the school district used to have a district song. And this district song used to be played at management conferences in years past. So, this past management meeting, I asked if it was possible to revive the district song. And these young people before us did an amazing job rebirthing the school district song, which is one of the songs we'll sing here tonight, but I believe we have a selection prior to that, so I'm gonna turn it over to you. But I expect all board members and cabinet members to sing along to the district song. No, I'm not. I'm begging you. Anyway, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name's Katie Sadler. I am the creative arts teacher at Salinas Elementary. And these, ah, thank you. And these are our fourth graders. And we got them together, all the fourth graders that we have got together and learned the district song. And then we also have another special song we're gonna open with, and it's called "Music Is Always There."
There we go. That's more deserving right there. There we go. Here we go.
The next song we have, live piano, where is that? Let's see where. Oh, perfect. All right. So, we're gonna sing with you. You ready? Okay, here we go. And this is the district song.
Wow, fantastic. We're the best is because our fourth graders from Salinas are the best. I'll tell you that right now, so great job. How about you? If you weren't smiling and clapping out there, I don't know. We're gonna have to have a talk after the meeting, all right? Because I couldn't stop smiling watching all of you, young men, young ladies, performing such a great job. We're so proud of you. Well done, and we definitely love you guys and girls.
Great job.
Great job, yep. I don't know about you, but I hope we can say "meeting adjourned" now. Let's end on that note. I'll just keep... Unfortunately, we have business to do. I'll tell you, that's what we go to work for every day and that we love, and so, well done, well done. Very well done. All righty, folks, well, thank you again to our fourth graders from Salinas Elementary as well as our wonderful teachers and staff that work with them as well, so let's give them a big shout-out and applause as they leave and go home and do homework. All right. 3.2, Resolution and Recognition of Patriot Day, and that'll be Ms. Mary Ellen Grande.
Whereas on September 11, 2001, terrorists hijacked and crashed passenger planes into the World Trade Center's Twin Towers in New York City, into the Pentagon, the U.S. Department of Defense Headquarters in Arlington County, Virginia, and into a field in Somerset County, Pennsylvania, 130 miles northwest of Washington, D.C., falling short of its intended target because of the heroic efforts of passengers onboard. And whereas, these attacks were by far the deadliest terrorist attacks ever launched against the United States, killing and injuring thousands of innocent people. And whereas, the greatness of America shone brightly in the bravery of victims, in the heroism of first responders who laid down their own lives to help others, to save them, in the compassion of people who stepped forward to help those they had never met, and in the generosity of millions of Americans who enriched our country with acts of service and kindness. And whereas, by a joint resolution approved December 18, 2001, the U.S. Congress designated September 11 of each year as Patriot Day. And whereas, in proclaiming September 11 Patriot Day in 2003, President George W. Bush called upon government and all Americans to display the flag at half-staff on that day and to observe a moment of silence to honor the innocent victims who lost their lives. And whereas, in 2009, President Barack Obama amended the Patriot Day Presidential Proclamation, officially designating September 11 as a national day of service and remembrance. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes September 11, 2023, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance, and encourages district staff, students, and families to join together in serving our communities and neighborhoods through good deeds that rekindle the extraordinary spirit of togetherness and compassion that arose in the immediate aftermath of the September 11, 2001 tragedy.
Vote.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman and seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Camelia?
Aye.
Ms. Amena? Amena?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Chusky?
Aye.
Ms. Sevaios?
Aye.
Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Scott White, aye. Ms. Marion?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 3.3, Resolution and Support of California High School Voter Education Weeks. Let me see. Ms. Felicia, can you see that? We have you as reading. Are you able to see the resolution? Or should I go with someone else?
I see it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental, fundamental of democracy and our constitutional republic, one of them must be personally cherished, practiced, and championed as civic duty. And whereas, young people play a critical role in our democracy by helping to choose the people who lead us and by voicing their opinions on the issues that are important to them. And whereas, by reaching out early and often to students, we can help them develop a strong and lasting appreciation for the value of voting. And whereas, California Educational Code designates the last two full weeks, in both September and April, to be a high school voter education weeks. And whereas, California has an online tool that allows eligible 16 and 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote and automatically become active voters once they turn 18. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District declares the weeks of September 18 through the 29th of 2023 and April 15 through the 26th, 2024, as a high school voter education weeks, and encourages district schools to participate in activities that help register and pre-register eligible students to vote while encouraging others to become informed citizens committed to being active voters once they reach a voting age. So, move.
Second.
It is moved by Ms. Alexander, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. All right, let's go ahead and vote. I will start with our students. Ms. Camelia? Ms. Amena?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
All right, and the rest of us will vote electronically. My understanding is it's working now.
Mrs. Grande?
Okay, motion carries, and we went on to 3.4, Resolution and Recognition of California Native American Day, and that will be Ms. Rosales Medina.
Thank you so much. Whereas the Southern California region has been more, has home, has been home to many generations of Native peoples with district cultures, distinct cultures and traditions. And whereas, Native American Day began in California in 1939, when Governor Colbert Olson dedicated October 1st as Indian Day. And in 1968, California tribal leaders and Governor Ronald Reagan declared the Fourth Friday of September as California Indian Day. And whereas, now known as California Native American Day, it is a day to honor the historic and cultural contributions, contributions of Native Americans, especially, especially the 126 Indian nations in California, including the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, also known as the Yamava, Varen, Varam clan. And whereas, educational leaders throughout the region are encouraged to involve themselves in the schools, in their schools, in the statewide focus on improving education provided to our children and about the local indigenous tribes of Southern California. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District declares September 22, 2023, Native, California Native American Day, and encourages all educators to commemorate this day with appropriate educational activities.
Vote.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chusky. Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Camelia?
Aye.
Ms. Amena?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
All right, the rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you. A motion carries. We'll move on to 4.0, Public Comments. 4.1, Receive Public Comments. This is the only time to poke, we'll have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Sorry about that. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at public meetings. All right. I apologize if I make a mistake on this name, so, looks like Ms. Gidry? I hope I got that correct? Come on up for public comment. Did I say that correctly? All right, well, welcome and good evening.
Good evening, boys. A green button. Hello. Hi, I'm Shaila Gidry, and I'm working in the, excuse me, I'm working at the San Bernardino City Unified School District, Curtis Middle School Cafeteria Worker. I got a permanent position this year. I've been substituted for five years now. I came up to the board today to ask for a consideration to consider the, the... employees for a city bus pass. The kids get one. I wrote a bunch of letters last year, um, to have the employees considered as well to represent the city on the city bus, um, with a badge, because when I take the bus, I have to get a variety of bus pass cards and, and I don't want to lose mine, and I don't want my mind to get wet, and I felt like the badge would give me more, um, security and, um, recovery response to my position that I'm contracted for is very important to me and my family and friends. So, um, I'm bringing it to you today to ask for such and to, um, ask for it like as soon as possible, because, um, we, we, we deserve it, you know? I've been, I've been, um, in this city for all my schools since third grade, and, um, and I, I like it, and I want to continue to, um, to, to be a part of the community here and, and, um, make good things happen.
Thank you, Ms. Gidry. We appreciate your comments and your time and your service to our kids too.
Thank you too.
All right, our next public comment is Ms. Barbara Pastacek. Welcome and good evening. Welcome to the rest of our SBTA folks up there. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, School Board and Cabinet. My name is Barbara Pastacek, and I'm the SBTA Vice President, uh, and I would like to give a big welcome from SBTA to Mary Rhone Goodwin. We look forward to working with you, and we would also like to welcome Terry Komenek back to SBCUSD. Welcome home. Uh, we'd also like to thank our scheduled schools for attending the school board meeting. We're encouraging our members to participate and become more knowledgeable about the procedures and the decision-making processes of the district. I would like to recognize and give a big thank you to the educators from Davidson Elementary, Newmark Elementary, Holcomb Elementary, Accountability and Ed Tech, Cajon, Wilson Elementary, and Riley Elementary. We want to thank you all for the great partnership to the school, uh, between the school board, cabinet, and SBTA. I hope you all have a great evening, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pastacek. Good to see you. All righty, that's it for in-person public comments. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any, um, virtual public comments?
We do not.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. So, we will move on to 5.0, Public Hearings. 5.1, San Bernardino Unified School District Sunshine Contract Successor to California School Employee Association, Chapter 183, Human Resources. So, let me go ahead and close the general session meeting. All right. All right, I'll now open a public hearing for item number 5.1, Public Hearing for San Bernardino Unified School District Sunshine Contract Proposal Successor to the California School Employee Association, Chapter 183.
There are no comments.
There are no comments. Any comments from the board? All right, hearing and seeing none. This public hearing is now closed. All right, be it resolved, the Board of Education received a district, uh, initial sunshine contract proposal successor agreement to the California School Employee Association, Chapter 183, CSEA. That'd be entertaining a motion. Vote.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savios. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none. We'll go ahead and move to my left to our student board members. Ms. Camelia?
Aye.
Ms. Amena?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
The rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you. So, we'll go back and open up our regular board meeting, and we'll move on to 6.0, Closed Session. 6.1, Closed Session Public Comments. This is a time that members of public can provide an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under this closed session. Individuals or comments on any other subject matter within the board's jurisdiction may address those during the regularly scheduled public comments, which is later in the agenda. Actually, it was earlier in the agenda, so we've already covered that. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any?
There are no comments.
All right, there are no comments, so we will go ahead and recess to closed session. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, for all those of you that are waiting out there. I know it can be a while sometimes in closed sessions, so we appreciate your patience. We'll move on to 7.1, Appointment of Coordinator, Expanded Learning. All right. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved appointment of following employee Tiffany Urina, Coordinator, Expanded Learning, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. So move. It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, uh, students who will not vote on this one, it will be us electronically.
All right, Ms. Urina, we are excited, board, about another excellent manager joining our ranks. A few things about Mrs. Tiffany Urina, our new coordinator for after-school programs, Expanded Learning. Uh, she's been with us, oh, she's been in education for over 15 years, uh, been with the district since 2011, Pacific High School Teacher, uh, Program Facilitator, and now Program Specialist in Expanded Learning, After-School Programs. A few things that have come up in the process of interview, she absolutely loves our community and our scholars. That's number one. That's excellent. Um, she has a wonderful disposition for putting after-school programs together, strong after-school programs together, and she is ready for the challenge of moving it forward. So, I welcome Mrs. Tiffany Urina.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Tillman, board members, Superintendent Ariano, and our cabinet members. I am so excited, and thank you so much for allowing me to, to continue my journey with our Expanded Learning Department, under the direction and the leadership of our fearless leader, Director Ann Pearson. Our EXL team is working so hard to create the safest and most engaging before and after school program. So, I'm so excited to what the future is going to bring. So, be on the lookout for the great things that our EXL department is going to bring for our scholars. Thank you so much.
All right, well, we love the energy and the attitude. Great job. Congratulations. Did you have any family here by chance to introduce?
I do. I have my sister Jessica Karen and my EXL family in the back.
I see that back there. That is family, right? Work family. We love it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and congratulations again. All right, we'll move on to 7.2. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves resignation agreement HR-CLASSS-23-24-05-ER.
So move.
Second. It is moved by Ms. Husky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's vote. Again, this will just be, uh, board members, not student members. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The rest of us will vote electronically. Moving on to 7.3, Expulsion of Students. Let me get down to the... Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts recommendation findings of hearing panel based on review of the panel's findings, facts, and recommendation orders expulsion of following student with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Vote.
Second.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Is, uh, absent. We'll move on to 7.4. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts recommendation findings of facts of positive development nor suspension or expulsion of following students or student with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Vote. It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. The rest will vote electronically. Moving on to 7.5. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following student was recommended for suspension, but suspension was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for suspension, the suspension was reversed or modified.
All right, so move.
Second. It was motioned, uh, moved by Ms. Husky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. We'll move on to, let me make sure, 7.6. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted. Vote.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savios. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Husky. I mean, thank you, Ms. Alexander. That was Ms. Husky last meeting. Maybe me next meeting. Moving on to 7.7. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorized the readmission of following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Bernardino Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Vote. It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The rest will vote electronically. 7.8, Other Closed Session Action. I do not believe there's any other closed session action, so we'll move on to 8.0, Board Discussion. 8.1, Arrowhead United Way, the Magical Music of Motown Event Sponsorship. All right, let me see if we got anything in here, and I believe we're going to turn this over to Board Member Alexander. Is that correct? All right, Ms. Alexander?
Thank you for agendaizing this. Um, as we discussed about a month ago, I feel like I'm echoing. The Arrowhead, Arrowhead United Way hosts the inaugural Hunger Relief Benefit Concert presenting the Magical Music of Motown on October 14th, 2023. Um, this historic, it will be at the San Bernardino Valley College Auditorium. The event's theme is united in purpose to feed the nation towards our, their efforts to continue to support the agency service area, which consists of San Bernardino City and all the counties within, um, all the cities within San Bernardino County. Um, without reading the whole letter, I would like to just go down to, um, let's share the benefit is, uh, for the students at San Bernardino Valley College to help with their hunger program, Hunger Relief Program. And I would like to propose that we sponsor, um, it'd be their bronze sponsor, which is for $5,000.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alexander. Uh, I'll look at my colleagues. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to, uh, maybe look at comparisons. How, uh, what, has there been other sponsorships that we've gone $5,000? And if, if there has been, what was, uh, what was a sample of it? Because I know we've done 1,000, um, and so forth, so wanted to compare with this one with the 5,000.
You know, Ms. Rosales Medina, just based on my recent recollection, I know we have sponsored, uh, LEED, uh, in the past, and I believe there's been different amounts, uh, not necessarily table sponsorship, but actually a, I call it like a banner sponsorship or a certain level sponsorship. Uh, I believe there's a lot of different criteria there as we send quite a few students to the event. I believe anywhere from 100 to a couple hundred students as well. Um, and it is a multi-day event. I believe it's like a week-long event as, uh, so there's a lot of student interaction as well, student participation, uh, in the LEED Summit, as it is, as it's called.
Right.
I can't recollect others, um, that we've sponsored. Doesn't mean that there hasn't been. You know, I'd have to defer to, you know, maybe, well, our business office, who I deferred to on this one, but, uh, Ms. Komenek would know that, but, uh, or whomever would approve those. Uh, but I know we've done obviously a lot of table sponsorships and things such as that.
Right, right. The table sponsorship, but this one's, um, requesting 5,000. I'm trying to look for the flyer. For some reason, I'm not able to see it, just to see, um, the, the Arrowhead, um, a little, maybe you could talk a little bit about Arrowhead United Way and what they actually do. I, I know, um, I've seen them involved, but I'm, I just don't know exactly what they, what they do. Felicia, so I don't, Ms., um, Ms. Alexander?
Yeah, no problem. I can go into detail about what was in the letter, and I can make sure, I believe Karen sent it out to everybody, but I'll make sure we have it resent again. Um, the Arrowhead United Way has served our community for over 132 years, fighting the health, education, and financial wellness of individuals and families faced with life and seasonal challenges. Arrowhead United Way has continued to assist during critical times in response to December 2nd in 2012 during an unfortunate terrorist attack. Arrowhead United Way established the San Bernardino United Relief Fund that partnered with San Bernardino County Supervisor. Over $2.5 million was raised and 100% was distributed to those affected by that particular event that received funds from the relief fund.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Um, yeah, thank you for that. I'm trying to look at their website as well to try to see, um, the, the direct benefits from our students, so I appreciate you reading the letter. Thank you.
All right, Vice President, oops, sorry. Vice President Tillman?
Yeah, my, my only concern is, in the letter we got from the, uh, legal counsel, it said that, uh, we could do it if it benef, directly benefited our, uh, student. So, is this going to directly benefit our students? It is two, there's two different things. We know we can, all board members can attend the event, so that'd be money going towards it, but over and above that, I guess the concern is to make sure that this money's going to go towards helping current students in the district. That's what it sounded like. When, when I read that, uh, opinion from the lawyers, that's what it sounded like. So, is it going to directly impact our students?
Oh, no, no, that was my interpretation as well, Vice President Tillman. So, Ms. Alexander again?
Right. So, um, good point, Ms. Tillman. So, all right, we have students that attend San Bernardino Valley College through our dual program, so they can benefit from this program because it's helping hunger relief for students who attend San Bernardino Valley College.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander, um, Ms. Husky for one of our student board members. I believe it's, uh, is it Ms. Camelia? Nightfall, does Ms. Camelia, your last name? All right, El Zapa? I'm hard of hearing, so I put... I'm hard of hearing, so I put.
Camelia Elzatma.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Would student board members be eligible to attend this event with the student, with the actual board members? And could we attend similar events as well?
I would believe so.
I don't think that there's any restriction. I think that would be up to the board, but I would see why you, I would say you could, but I think the board has to make that decision.
Ms., oh, wait till my turn, sorry. Is that your question? Okay, very good. And let me take a look. Ms. Mary Ann Grande?
Well, I, I remember being a welfare mom in this area for many, many years. And United Way was one of the ways that helped my neighbors and I over on L Street of Mount Vernon. And anytime you feed children, you help students. Anytime you feed their parents, you help students. Anytime you help their brothers and sisters who are going to Valley or any other community colleges, you help students. So I, I don't have any trouble supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Grande, and then any other board comments before I go as president? All right, I think my biggest concern too is what Vice President Tillman did mention is, you know, what's the direct impact on our students and our community? I don't know if we've sponsored United Way in the past, Ms. Alexander, or do you know if we have?
I'm not, I'm not aware if we have, and if not, that would be another.
Okay, so this is our first time that we're requesting funds to sponsor them? Okay. Yeah, I think that the first time, this is my opinion only, the first time it's kind of a big amount, $5,000. I think, you know, if we have folks that want to attend, I would recommend folks choose to attend and that they could pay for their tickets for that. But, or table sponsorship, first time around, I think I'd want to, this is for me, I'd like to see historical context before we spend that much money. Thank you.
All right, one other point though, I wanted to make sure that we address because Mary Ellen touched upon it. United Way helps those that are disadvantaged. So they've helped unhoused. And I'm not sure if there's other organizations within the city of San Bernardino who has had such an impact. So that's just one other point I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Savios?
I just, I just have one question for my clarification. So it sounded like there's a sponsorship request, but then there's an event. Is it, are we doing, are we asking to do both or one or the other?
Well, I think the initial request was $5,000, you know, for discussion. But, you know, that's what the discussion is about. One, obviously to learn more about the event, learn about how it impacts our students and our community, within our community, and then make a determination if that's what we want to do as a board or something different.
And so if we decide to attend the event, that's like an additional cost to attend the event?
Well, that would be an additional cost in addition to if we chose to sponsor at 5,000. I think, like I said, that's why I presented a different option or different options. Because, you know, I think we should explore all options and put multiple options on the table. I don't think any of us here do not want to support them, let me say that. But what level of support, I think, is the question to ask.
So I guess for clarification for Ms. Alexander directly, is, is the 5,000 just a donation? Or would that like include a table or anything like that? It's just a donation?
Felicia, I don't know if you can hear us, but one question I think might help is, is this event in a theater where it's theater seating where people would buy tickets to a seat? Or is the, is the event where people purchase tables and, and experience the event?
My understanding is at San Bernardino Valley College Auditorium, in terms of tables, I, that's not clear. I can purchase a ticket. We can purchase a ticket. But I, I just, I hope I answered that question, but I really want us to go back to the purpose of the impact behind this event. We're impacting our students. And when you impact families, you're impacting students. And this is in the city of San Bernardino. So we have to make sure that, you know, if 5,000 isn't a number that we want to embrace, then I'm open to that. But in terms of purchasing a ticket, we can do that as well. But the proposal that I made was some type of sponsorship. The sponsorship levels are the ones that were in the letter. 5,000 was the initial sponsor, and then it grows from there. It goes from 5,000 to 20,000. So I started with the bronze.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying because that does help. I, I think, just knowing that it goes from 5,000 to 20,000, wow, that's, that's, that's pretty steep. So, and I don't, you know, and I'm glad Ms. Ellen, Mary Ellen, mentioned that we, you know, she has benefited from programs like this, and some of our families have benefited from programs like this. I think that's really good. Knowing how many families have, and that'd be good to know as well, maybe even for Arrowhead to give us an update on how many families do they service within San Bernardino City Unified School District? Because I know it seems like they do the whole county, right? It's not just San Bernardino. And so, I mean, for future, this might be something where we can increase support depending on just knowing more facts on how many families they do support and the benefits that they help provide within San Bernardino City Unified School District. I, I think 5,000 is pretty steep for the first time. Maybe there's, you said there's nothing lower than that. That's the lowest. Maybe we can invite families, maybe parents, buy several tickets to where it accumulates where every site has several seats that we can purchase. That way we can help support through that way as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And Ms. Alexander, do you know a ticket dollar amount by chance? Oh, it's 50? Okay, sorry. $50 is the ticket amount. Vice President Tillman, then Ms. Savios.
Yeah, I'd like to propose a motion and make it a hybrid. I would like to propose we do $5,000, but the $5,000 includes any tickets that district board members or staff or students that we're going to attend be able to use. So that way we don't have the concern about donating the $5,000 plus additional tickets on top of that. So the total amount would be $5,000, if they're willing to do it, Mrs. Alexander. Telling them we're donating the $5,000, but say if there's board members that want to attend, they'll have to allow us to have tickets for those board members or student board members or district staff or parents that want to attend. I think that'd be a fair hybrid.
I think that's reasonable.
That's my motion.
Accumulative, because I think it's, I mean, you know, how many tickets would we be? I'm thinking maybe 20 tickets or so.
Yeah, but if we don't do 100 tickets, we just do five, I'm fine with that, as long as it's included in that $5,000 amount. And I'm doing it based on the fact that, as Ms. Grande said, they do service our students and families, and it doesn't take a whole lot of families to service to get to a cost of $5,000. So I think it's definitely justified. That's my motion. Thank you.
And, and, sorry.
Oh, if it, and here's the thing, we have a motion and a second, you know, and then again, we could say discussion. So we have a motion for 5,000. There would be approximately 100 tickets if necessary. I would actually ask to amend that motion that we still get sponsorship notification authority as well. But I'll go to discussion, Ms. Savios.
Well, actually, it was going to be a discussion, so I, again.
We're still discussing.
I was gonna, I was gonna propose to, but Mr. Tillman jumped the gun, but I don't think that they're going to reject any amount. So I was going to say, even if on their website, the lowest amount is 5,000, if we were to say, okay, we want to donate 1,000 or 2,000 or whatever the board decides, it's not like they're going to turn us down and say, oh, no, we only accept 5,000 or 20,000. That was my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. Ms. Chahusky?
I looked up on my phone because I couldn't get it on the, it was restricted on our, the link was restricted on here. And the 5,000 came with two VIP, two VIP tickets and a lot of different branding for us, which I think is a, the branding is positive. It's in a number of different areas. I can pull it up again. But I like the idea of asking them to give more tickets. If our student board members are interested in going, I would like, this is a great first event for them to attend on our behalf. And I think we should also make sure we remember to, to send invitations to them for other events as well where we have sponsorships.
Okay, thank you. And with that being said, Ms. Chahusky, I would say for our student board members, assuming this goes through, should be the VIPs. I mean, if this is what we're about and we're about, you know, taking care of our kids, supporting them and their families, and highlighting them especially, then that would be my recommendation. Fortunately, you two ladies are the ones here tonight, because we have nine of them, and I'm not, I don't want to get myself in trouble now for putting that out there, because I'm sure the others will say that about me. So, sorry you weren't at this meeting. Just kidding. But that, that would be my recommendation. Again, you know, 5,000 is a lot compared to what we've done in the past. However, you know, if we have more consensus and agreement, you know, we'll obviously get our marketing out there, our branding, and then our students. I'd really, really encourage the board and our staff, assuming this goes through, that we invite our families and our students. I think they should be first and foremost, and then after that, our staff. But that would be my recommendation, so. All right, well, we've had a great discussion. I don't think there's any other discussion. So we'll go ahead and take a vote, and I will start. And young ladies, I apologize, I do have your names now. So I want to make sure to call you by your last names. So we'll start with, correct me, I couldn't hear you. Elzatma, Elzatma? Elzatma, I got it. Okay, Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
All right, the rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you.
President Wyatt, can I just ask a clarification question? So what, what are they, you voting on $5,000 and what?
$5,000 total, which includes any tickets that, up to 100, students or other staff are going to use.
And you said up to 100?
Well, it would be, it'd be up to 100. $50 each.
They'll have to agree to it, but I don't think it would be.
Okay.
I don't think there are yet.
So, okay, so some tickets thrown in in addition to the 5,000?
Exactly.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
No, the tickets are inclusive in the 5,000.
Correct, right.
All right, and then we'll vote electronically. Thank you, for those that haven't voted yet. All right, motion carries. Moving on to, thank you, Ms. Alexander. We'll move on to 9, 9.0, action items, 9.1. Personnel report, let me get to there, sorry. Personnel report number four dated September 5, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented, a move.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion? Ms. Grande, I see your light on. Oh, you're in trouble now. I'm just kidding. We'll go ahead and take your off. Thank you very much. All right, so no discussion. So we'll go ahead and vote, starting with our student board members. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you.
Ms. Chahusky?
All right, motion carries. And just for the record, Vice President Tillman was excused. He had a personal commitment he had to leave for, so that is why he did exit the meeting. Moving on to 9.2, thank you for your patience. Resolution authorizing issuance of the San Bernardino Unified School District election 2012 general obligation bond, Series HNI. Mr. Pace, I believe, is that you and your team? All righty. Wasn't a presentation, it was just an action item. So entertain a motion.
So moved. I can't.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Ms. Savios. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Very good. Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Rest of the vote electronically. Thank you very much. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to, sorry, let me. 10.0, consent items. 10.1, approval consent list.
All moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I can't.
Seconded by Ms. Savios. All right, any discussion or items to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right, hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
All right, the rest of the vote electronically. All right, motion carries. Let's move on to, we got a few items still here, folks. 11.0, reports, comments by union organizations. 11.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, President Wyatt.
Hey, there you are. Good morning, Ms. Didn't know you were here. Good, good evening. I said, good morning. I'm sorry, it wasn't one of our 1 o'clock meetings. Thank God.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Vito Salcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. I know you already heard from our Vice President, Ms. Paticek Cox, earlier this evening, but I too would like to extend a warm welcome to Mr. Terry Comnic and Ms. Mary Rowan Goodwin to the SBC US team, welcoming them and thanking our members who also came out to the meeting tonight. We're glad to have you back, Mr. Comnic, and we're looking forward to meeting Ms. Goodwin. I also want to take a moment tonight to give a shout out to the HR team who has been working around the clock to process and place a very high number of educators in classrooms and other positions this past month. I would also note that we just passed the contractual deadline for class leveling in elementary last Monday and secondary as of today. And unlike past years, we have not had to scramble to collapse and create classes and shuffle students and educators around to level classes at this time. So I want to give a big thanks to Dr. Funchess, Ms. Clark, and the HR team for making this happen. And lastly, our negotiations team is looking forward to our next meeting with the district this Friday, and I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Salcala. Good to see you. All right, CSEA, 11.2.
No report.
Thank you very much. Moving on, 11.3, Communication Workers America.
No report.
Very good. 11.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Outstanding. We'll move on to 12.0, reports and comments. 12.1, student board members. And I'll change up the order a little bit here, and I'll go with Ms. Preciado first. Ms. Preciado? Caught you off guard there, huh? Yeah, you gotta be ready at all times.
Good afternoon to you all. My name is Jimena Preciado. I am a junior attending San Gregorio High School. And I just first want to express my immense gratitude to you guys all, giving me this huge opportunity to not only represent a voice within my school, but to represent my voice within the whole San Bernardino School Unified District. So a couple of things that I want to point out, a couple of things that are significant to me is, well, first, I want to say like where I come from. But I lived here since I was two years old. I was born at Lumalinda. And I lived here for, like I said, two years. Then I moved to Rancho, so definitely a different, like, educational system that they have there. And I feel like having Rancho also like opened my mind and had like a broader knowledge of their educational system over there. Now I've moved back over here to San Bernardino. Now I want to continue with what I'm passionate about within my. Now I want to continue with what, um, I'm passionate about within my, um, educational, um, system in my district. So one thing that's very significant to me is I definitely want more student engagement. I am the president of Students for Change, which is a club that creates opportunities for students to learn leadership skills and to uplift their voices, um, to make decisions within our community. So I definitely like student engagement. I'm also an ASV, which is, like, key for students to engage. But like, people also, like, come together is a big key within our community. Another thing that I would like to discuss that's also very important is, um, to sustain, like, improvement efforts within our students. I feel like having more improved, um, like, successes and efforts within our students is, like, key because I feel like people, especially students, don't have that support. And that also ties into making, um, a mental health center within our schools. I know Cajon has one, but to build more, to expand more within our school is also very key. You know, having a mental support system also helps schools to, um, achieve, um, their successes.
All righty, Ms. Preciado, well done. Ms. El Zatma?
Hey, uh, hi, I'm Camille El Zatma. I'm also a junior at San Gregorio High School. Um, I've kind of grown up within the San Bernardino School District. My mom has been a teacher at San G for twenty-three plus years now, so I was a child running through the halls of the San Bernardino School District, getting nailed up by the teachers and all the administrators and everything. Um, the school district produced me through my worst times and my best times. It's always, like, kind of been like a little home and a second family for me. Um, especially the high school, San Gregorio. Um, it made some of my lifelong friendships, such as Jimena herself. Um, so it's really just been a big part of my life, and I'm super excited and super grateful to have been given this opportunity by all the board members to now come and give back to that same school district that kind of raised me and is still continuing to raise me and teach me all these lessons. So I'm just super excited to be able to now be a voice for students of future generations and the current generation, um, and give everybody kind of an opportunity to be heard and understood, um, within our school district. Something that I'm super looking forward to and super passionate about is definitely students' mental health. I think up until high school, I didn't really understand that it was okay to have bad days. I think when I was little, I was like, why am I having a bad day? Like, you know, but in high school, when it really, like, hit me that I was like, okay, I'm able to take that break. I think, especially in high school, students are trying so hard to make themselves look good to colleges and accomplish all these AP classes. And a lot of the times, I don't think we establish that support. So I think getting that mental health system from a young age, or getting that help from a young age, where it's like, it's okay to have a bad day or take the time, um, is super important. I think also, like, Jimena's student engagement is super important because the students are what makes the San Bernardino City Unified, City Unified School District. I know we have the, um, the adult board and everything, but without the students, nobody would have anything to run. So definitely supporting our students and making sure that they're engaged and they're enjoying their school environment and that they feel like the school and the board and the district is much as, is just as much theirs as it is everybody else's and as it is the adults. Because I feel like, especially being a youth, a lot of the times you don't feel like you have a voice because you grow up with adults and they're your superiors. And so to be able to feel like you have that equal voice. And so I think that's also why I'm super excited about the student boards. You're like, oh, I get to be put on the same level as the adults and get to have, be part of those discussions, not only for myself, but for the entire district, so.
All righty, well done. Thank you very much. And now we'll start over here to my right and go to Board Member, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Just warms my heart just to hear our student board members, honestly, because at the end of the day, we are here because of you. And we are here because of your fellow, um, you know, classmates and elementary all the way up to high school. We also have an adult school program. We have, um, element, uh, preschool program, early childhood programs. So we have so many children and, and individuals that we support. So I want to say thank you for your comments. And it just shows everyone that's listening, listening to us, or if not seeing us on YouTube, the fact that we're, we're pushing for great things and the, and also that we have, um, our superintendent, Ariano, who actually brought this, that I had no idea, the seeing along for the San Bernardino Unified School District. And how, you know, I think that's why it's so important to, to uplift those that, um, have come from San Bernardino, who have worked in our district, who have, who have studied in our district, because then they're the ones that know exactly, um, some of the historical pieces that might be missing, that we need to bring back, that were a great, um, you know, a great opportunity. And the fact that we had our students up here, it's been a while since we had students perform. Um, I love to see that more, um, maybe having other school sites come, even just seeing this on, or maybe showing their, their gifts. Um, I know we want to make sure we strive for excellence in education, um, but we also want to show the many talents our students are able to bring, that it's not just, I mean, it's academics is extremely important, but it's also bringing, uh, bringing that other aspects of things that, you know, i- it shows that it's, um, you know, maybe that, uh, what's it called when you say, um, when you become overwhelmed and it's okay to take a step back and really look at life in a different way, and having our students just to enjoy at the moment. It might be music, it may be arts, it may be performing arts, it may be sports, something that kind of releases that energy. So I'm just really happy and I'm really excited for the future of our district. And, and I want to thank again, Ms. Ariano, for bringing this board.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, and next was Vice President Tillman, and after Ms. Savios. Kind of jumping around there, but, okay.
Call my name?
Ms. Savios?
Thank you. Well, good, good evening, everybody. Um, I also want to say thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you, ladies. Um, I know we've been meeting, uh, two at a time, every board meeting, so I'm glad to meet you this time around. And, um, you, you said it, you said it best, actually. I wrote it down with the, without the students, we wouldn't have anything to run, right? And I think that that's, um, what we have to, and, and we all do, you know? But it's nice to be reminded by one of our students, right? That, that you guys are the focus and the priority, um, and the reason why we're here. So thank you. And in addition to that, I just have one comment, um, and I apologize, I have a terrible headache. Um, I just want to, um, make the comment early in the year, and I was going to make it last board meeting, but I completely forgot. If maybe there's a way, um, this year at the end, towards the end of the year, and we can talk more, um, with, um, Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Applegate as well, but if there's a way that maybe we can combine, um, I know that at the end of the year, um, you know, the different departments, like Special Education, the Swiss Department, as well as Positive Youth Development, they hold their, um, like, end of year conferences or PD, you know, a professional development. Um, and I know that there, it, there has been some overlap between the different departments in terms of, you know, maybe P, PBIS, or, you know, best practices around interventions and things like that. Maybe if there could be a little bit more collaboration amongst the three departments so that there's more, um, you know, streamlined and we're not, um, you know, leaving our counselors or whoever it is that's attend, that are attending these, uh, professional development, uh, conferences. We're not leaving them to have to choose, you know, one or the other, or, you know, stretching themselves thin because there's overachievers that might want to attend all of them. Um, and sometimes, you know, different departments may have different philosophies around some of these topics. Just really making sure that we do align them across the district so that we, as a district, are delivering, you know, the same message around, um, specifically around counselors and what they're, um, you know, how they're supporting students in that tier one and tier two, um, intervention pieces. Because I know that all three departments in, in one way or another are supporting that tier one and tier two, um, and sped that tier three as well. Um, so that would be really nice to see if we can, you know, kind of do that this year. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. Uh, Ms. Chahusky?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start by echoing, um, Ms. Savios on the coordination between the departments. I know sometimes our, our, the messages aren't always clear, so I'd like to echo, um, echo that. Um, first, I'd like to say, and my, uh, welcome again to, uh, Mr. Komnik and Ms. Goodwin. I'm really excited to work with you both. I'm really happy you're back. Um, I've worked with you in the past, and I, I'm really excited to have that opportunity again. And I look forward to all that this new and complete cabinet are gonna, um, do for our students and for our district under the leadership of Mr. Ariano. I, um, he said earlier, it's a great day in San Bernardino, and I think with this team, um, that's going to be really true. Um, it, it's been a long time since I heard the district song. I had to laugh. Um, I heard that it might come out tonight. I, I heard a rumor and, and, uh, I was kind of excited to hear it because, um, it, it, it sets a really good tone. It's a good tune. And, um, so I, that was a really great, um, way to sort of solidify the fact that we are finally a full team, ready to go in one direction for the benefit of our students. Um, I had the opportunity earlier today, you know, um, some time ago, I brought to you my concern around the, um, the, the pathway at Cajon around the dentistry, around the, the dental hygiene or, um, program. And I got to see today, um, the, um, the, uh, rendering for the classroom, that, that, the, the facility that is coming out of that work, and it is beautiful. Supposed to be ready in December, and I cannot wait for us all to go see it, um, because it is, I mean, that's just another way that our students are going to be able to walk out of our district, not only with their high school diploma, but with an employable trade that, that they can use either as a springboard, you know, for the, or, or beginning of their career. Um, so I'm really excited about that, and thank you, Mr. Pace and Mr. Preci for, for following through on that. Um, and then lastly, I'd also like to say, um, this is our last, the last of our, two of our, um, tonight was the last of our group. Um, unfortunately, um, Ms. Rosenbloom was ill and not able to make it tonight, but I was really happy to see you two, um, here tonight. I'm really excited for our student board program, um, and, you know, everything we're going to be doing with it. We are having finally our parent meetings this week with those student board member parents so that they understand the expectations, and we'll talk about some of the opportunities they have for field trips and events and, and the obligations that they have to come to board meetings and such like that. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I want to thank the board for the opportunity to, um, sort of be the liaison to our student board program, um, because I love working with kids, and this has just been really exciting. And these guys, you heard them tonight, all of them are just such great representatives of our students and our, and our schools. And I look forward to all the, the growth and everything that they're going to bring to us this year because you're, you're right, you are the only reason we're here. Without, you know, that is our only purpose, is, is the forty-five, forty-six thousand students that we have in our district. So thank you for representing them well.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, board. Good evening, community. Good evening, Superintendent Ariano and Cabinet. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I am currently on business travel, so I'm sorry I'm not there in person. Um, would like to formally welcome, uh, Mary Rowan Goodwin and Terry Komnik, even though I have met you, but I'm sorry I missed your event today. It looked like it was super fabulous. I really enjoyed the kids and them singing and, um, loved our song for the school district, so that was awesome. Um, I would like to also, um, say thank you to the board for, um, all the discussion we had about the sponsorship for United Way, um, Arrowhead United Way. I really appreciate, um, the questions that were asked and just the conversation we had around it. And wanted to just make sure that, you know, appreciate the fact that, you know, what we're doing and what we agreed to do is we'll have an impact on our community and what we will be able to, um, provide for our scholars and, and their families. As Mary Ellen said, it all comes full circle. So thank you for that. I really appreciate the support and us taking action in that regard. Um, also would like to, uh, bring up the fact that this coming Saturday, the San Bernardino Symphony is hosting a free event at the Roosevelt Bell Bowl, um, September ninth. It's from five until nine PM, and it's a free event. I don't know if any of you have attended any of our events by the San Bernardino Orchestra, but it's absolutely amazing. We have, like, a world-class act in terms of our maestro. He is internationally known. So if you're able to make it, please attend. Um, it is in, in, in the bowl, so in terms of capacity, it's quite large. And I would just like to inspire you all to attend. And then, um, lastly, I, I just would like to just make sure that, um, we just continue to stay focused on buying local when we can. I know that Terry is going to be presenting, um, our policy around our RFP process and what we do, and I'm looking forward to that. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I do put on the record that what we've done thus far is good. I just want us to be great. I also want us to be in alignment of what we're doing, um, as a city. It's extremely important, so I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. We'll move on to Mary Ellen Grande. We could skip, yeah? Just kidding.
I thought it was going to be skipped tonight. It's like, okay. Okay, well, I'm very excited for, um, just a few things, actually a lot of them. Uh, and I just failed to mention last time, um, what a wonderful, uh, uh, time we had last, uh, last time at the road, and my Rotary Club, who actually has a Rotary Life Club, too, a light club, where they help, uh, see, uh, freshmen, junior, um, sophomore, wait, backwards. Freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior members of Rotary Club. And they assist student leadership, and they sign up. And I think some of our board members, I think one or two of them actually went through Rotary Life. I'm not sure exactly which one. But they, we have a luncheon club, and I'm slowly and surely asking every single one of our board members to come and speak to us, either from the heart or to share, uh, something about the life. And, uh, if you've ever heard them speak, we had this last time was Danny Tillman. And he had us on the edge of our seats, talking about the budgets, and he spoke from the heart. And that, you could have heard a pin drop, and, and right away, everybody brought out the, uh, membership forms, waving them around, trying to get him to sign, but, you know, he's, thank you, goodbye. But, uh, we hope to see, uh, every single one of our board members, including our student board members, during, uh, you can come during, uh, Christmas break, Thanksgiving break. We'll find it's noon on Tuesdays at the El Clutch. And this last, uh, week, I was, was excited to have, um, well, we had Dr. Sandra, but she had to, um, miss because of, um, uh, issues. But, uh, she did send, uh, a duo that were just amazing. I just have to tell you, they were so loved, and they are signing up. They were very, it was, uh, the principal and the vice principal of the ICEC, Inland Center Education, Inland Career Education Center. And they put on a smash presentation. I mean, you really are amazed and incredible things that are going on there. And just, I really would like them to come and share it here with the board, with us. I really, and they have a PowerPoint, everything. And, um, okay, so our next speaker there will be none other than our own Chief Paulino. And we're real happy about that. So I invite you, all of you, I will let you all know. You can be there. It's a free lunch, and it's very, very good, very good food. Okay, so. I also wanted to share, I'm very excited, this next weekend I will be attending my second Masters in Governance class. So that's going to be two out of the five that I need to get it. And then I won't make any mistakes ever again. Not. Uh, anyway, I have fifty new friends I'm excited to see again, and they're all the way from, uh, the border and all the way from LA. They come from all over the country, and I love nothing better than to make new friends. And last, uh, I would just want to end my talks to, tonight. Um, I just believe that, uh, it's no secret how I feel about the Subacute. I've made no mistake about that. And I've, I've tried hard to let you know where, where my head is thinking, is going and where I'm, what I'm thinking. So I do want to keep you appraised of the little cat feet. Um, Dr. Lundey is, uh, marshaling people to go and visit the Subacute, and that's set for September twentieth at nine AM. So far, I think I see Myra on there. Uh, if I can resend that invitation out, if you would like to come around and, uh, and talk to us. To just, just see, it's non-gen, judgmental, just to come in and, and see what it is I'm, I'm perhaps talking about. Maybe, I doubt you will see what I see because I worked there for, as a teacher, for, you know, for the, my last year. That was my last assignment. Uh, and there's, it just needs to start a conversation. And I am, um, putting together the dream, and it, it's, there's no evidence for it there, that it will, you know, ever go forward. But the biggest dream is to just, let's build a brand-new children's hospital. And that's about as big as we can make it. And then I will just leave that there. And then my husband did something really sweet for me because he got tired of listening to me. So he did just, uh, knock out some maps of, from the county recorder or assessor's office that shows the vacant land that's behind the hospital where it is now, and it's pretty cool. I will pass these out and then say no more. I won't discuss it until it's agendized. Yes, but? All right, I'm done. I'm done.
Ms. Rosales Medina, I see your light.
No, 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 I was just going to say that, yeah, the best way is to communicate during the board meetings and just to make sure that we're not violating any rules. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Yeah, one, two, three.
Ms. Mary Ellen Grande, you don't make mistakes, just learning opportunities. I was, uh, no, ma'am. I was, no, ma'am, they're learning opportunities. All right, myself, I'll keep it brief. Again, just welcome to our student board members. Definitely great having you here. And like my colleagues, you just amaze us with your maturity and your ability to stand up here and not even seem a little bit nervous. I mean, I know when I was up here, I was scared to death and sometimes still at these meetings, but no, well done, job well done. We're very proud of you and we appreciate your voice and you representing our 47,000 students in this district. That's a lot, right? A lot of students, so that's who you are. Anyway, I just wanted to compliment Superintendent Ariano as well with his community staff forums that he's been hosting throughout our city. I think you have another one tomorrow night, right, at Middle College High? So, definitely getting out in our community and listening to our staff, number one, and also our community, which is huge, right? We want to hear the voice of our families, our students and our staff and what their concerns are, what their desires are. And he's had a very open format and doing a great job there. And then, had a really good time in his superintendent's leadership meeting as well. You know, I asked our colleagues, I think you probably got an email, to hopefully participate in one of them. So, we show that coherence as a board with our superintendent, executive cabinet, and our vision and mission as we talk about our plan for 2030. You know, we're almost at 2025. That's going to be here before we know it. So, we've got to execute and design our 2025 to 2030 plan. So, definitely a privilege to be in there, Superintendent Ariano. I appreciate the time and the minutes to speak to our staff. And as we saw, our fourth graders from Salinas were there as well. Got to give Mr. Ariano credit, he was really up there singing that song, I'll tell you. I'd like to say I was impressed, no, just kidding, but no, he had a lot of energy to it and it was actually a little bit of fun as we did that, so. But I'm just going to keep it at that. A lot of great stuff going out there, folks, and continue to do the great work to our staff and our students keep working hard and our families as well. You know, we want to support you with your children to do the best that we barely can and they can as well. And please stay safe out there. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'll try to keep it short as well. First of all, welcome to our student board members. Thank you for being here today and thank you for your words of wisdom today. They were profound, deep, and relevant. So, thank you for your words of wisdom today. I want to thank everyone who was also involved in the putting together the warm welcome for Terry and Mary Rhone. What a great job. And it was great to see our Mariachi students from Sanrio High School here today and everybody from the community rallying together to do the warm welcome. So, I'm very pleased to have a full cabinet now, a cabinet full of brilliance and energy and great experience. So, great things are going to happen because I've surrounded myself with people who are a lot smarter than I am, so. And that's what makes a great team. And what was nice about today is just running into old friends. I got to see Alton Garrett, who I hadn't seen in probably 20 years since I was here. Nice to catch up. So, Mr. Garrett, if you're watching, you know, it was great to catch up. And I'm going to take you up on your invitation, have lunch, and so he can tell me what's been going on in this city for the last 25 years. I also just once again want to thank the students from Salinas Elementary, the teacher, the principal for bringing the kids today and singing our Sanrio City Unified School District song. And, you know, I really believe that last line, "Out of all the school districts that are in the Golden West, San Bernardino is the best." And we're going to show the world that truly we are. So, thank you, Salinas Elementary, for being here today. Really appreciate you. And so, as President Wyatt has said, I'm continuing to engage with the community to collect that anecdotal information that we need as a board and as a team to create our vision for 2030. So, I've had the opportunity since the last time we spoke to meet with Pete Aguilar and his staff, and that was a very good conversation. And he's very supportive of the work that we want to do in terms of bringing continued innovation, well-rounded students, performing arts, STEM learning. So, he's really there to lend his support to us. And I had the opportunity to meet with Damon Alexander, one of our city councilmen, get his perspective. And as you heard today, he's very committed in making sure that we're working as a team with the city, not in isolation. So, I really appreciate Mr. Alexander's philosophy and approach and hope we can maximize those conversations. But I also have had the opportunity to attend since the last time, been Hillside, Newmark, Curtis Middle School, Shannon Hills Middle School, Bing Wong Elementary. And let me tell you, the instruction that I'm seeing in the classroom is high caliber and I'm very excited. Our support staff that are in those classrooms and in the offices and working in the cafeterias and cleaning the schools, outstanding. Our schools are just looking to that point where we talk about jewels of the community and our grounds are looking good. So, when I threw out that number at our welcome back to teachers of 50/50/95, meaning our short-term goal of getting to 50% proficiency in ELA, 50% proficiency in math, and 95% graduation rate for a four-year cohort, it is very attainable because I'm seeing the quality of instruction and support that's happening in the classroom. So, I'm very optimistic that we're going to get to those numbers. I also had an opportunity to meet and chat with Dr. Delgado, former superintendent of Sanrio City Unified School District. You know, like I said, in order to move forward, you have to know history, the past, right? So, it was nice to meet with Art and he looks great, man. I don't understand how 25 years later, he looks the same and I look all tore up and older. So, I definitely want to drink what he's drinking or eating what he's eating. He looked great today, right? Did you guys agree, those of you saw today? Amazing. But I appreciate Dr. Delgado's words of wisdom. And I'm looking forward to the last two superintendent forums. The first two have been well-attended and there've been some great feedback given not only by our staff, but our community. And our community is very supportive of what we're doing. Everyone has been very positive and they're very deliberate about what they want to see this district moving forward in the next five years. So, I think we're going to get some good marching orders from our community. And I'll be engaging with our students soon through thought exchange and meeting with our high school students in person. So, we're going to get some good marching orders that are relevant to our community. And I know in the coming days or coming weeks, I'll continue to be meeting with key people. So, just so you know, I got Ben Reynoso, who's a city councilman, I'll be meeting with him. Former mayor and former judge, Pat Morris, has committed to meet some time with me. Eloise Gomez Reyes, Assemblywoman, is going to be meeting with me, which I appreciate. And Tara Stone from Young Visionaries, I'm very excited to hear about his program. So, really getting a good global perspective of the community. So, I look forward each week to meeting new people. And I want to end with one more celebration. It's always great when we get to celebrate students who graduated from Sanrio City Unified School District. And I ask permission if I could make this nice announcement, but Anna Applegate, our very own Anna Applegate, her son was just sworn in, district attorney in Orange County, and he is a Sanrio City Unified School District graduate. So, Anna, we want to congratulate you and your son. We're very proud of them. And Sanrio City Unified School District putting out great people, right? So, congratulations.
And he would say that, thank you to Cajon and the teachers, Palm, Shannon Hills, and Cajon. So, thank you to SBCUSD.
And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ariano. I noticed I didn't put on a clock for you, but I'm going to watch next time. No, just kidding. Well done. Alrighty, we'll move on to 13.0, summary board requests, 13.1, review requests. Ms. Mountain Tag, I believe.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Savios, combines different departments, end-of-years, streamlining of conferences such as PBIS, so there is alignment specifically around counseling. The second request is from Ms. Alexander, reminding us on focusing on buying local, reminder on the alignment with the RFP process, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent Ariano had one more quick thing to share.
I'm sorry, I still had two minutes left from my five, right?
Oh, no, it's over once a clock.
I forgot to mention, board members, in front of you, you have a book that's called Kids of Sanrio City Unified School District, Niños de San Bernardino City. And this is a book that we give to every preschool and infant toddler in our district because literacy is important. So, we wanted to make sure you knew what this book was, how proud we are of this book. This is our Y, right here, all in one book. So, I hope you enjoy it and I hope you can share it with other folks. And it's just neat to see a book about our kids, the kids that we put our efforts in every day. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Superintendent Ariano. I think we need some copies for our student board members as well. And I want to say, it is about 8:42 and we were scheduled for 9:35, so great job to the board and our staff on staying on. Ms. Mary Ellen was, she's cutting me off here, but, all right, Ms. Mary Rhone Grande, since we're a little bit ahead of schedule, go right ahead.
You scared me. I forgot.
You'll remember. It's on one of your post-its, I saw it over there. All right, on that note, we will adjourn the meeting and everyone have a safe drive home. Be careful and as always, may God bless you all.